Let's call the regular meeting to order, please. Can we have a roll call?
Walzki.
Here.
Phillips. Cardy.
Here.
Over. Heatley.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Marsh.
Yeah, I see Marsh is, we'll be in in a minute.
Okay. Roberts.
Here.
Over. Absen. And DeVivo, Bruterly, Weisman, all absent.
Yep. So, um, I think, speaking of our student reps, I believe we're probably gonna get new ones now because they're graduating in this month, so. We'll probably have to re, I don't know if Mayor Keo. I think he's on top of that, he automatically processes the applications, I believe. Okay, Kyle Marsh is here. Alright, so with that, we do have a quorum, of course. So, action on the minutes of the regular meeting from April 1st. Can we have someone move the minutes? Hey, Lu Till.
Second.
Second, Cardy. Any changes, additions, attractions? None? All in favor of the minutes as posted? Say aye.
Aye.
I post. None. Minutes are approved. Approve of the agenda. Can we have someone move the agenda tonight?
Some of them.
Move Cardy. Over. Any changes to the agenda? Why's your?
Changes.
Oh, you have a change?
Potentially. Okay, we put the CIP at the end. I don't know if Baker Road stuff up, or?
I don't know if it matters, because we don't.
There's really, yeah, okay.
But thank you, I appreciate the thought, because before it didn't matter.
Before I got here, it made more sense.
Yeah, yeah. That's okay. We appreciate you thinking through, thinking of the public. Okay, all in favor of the agenda as posted, say aye.
Aye.
Post. None. Agenda is approved. Public hearings, we have three public hearings tonight. The first one is the Capital Improvements Plan. With that, I think we're going to have, I think Megan just give a brief intro, and then, you know, this is again, we've seen the CIP in a couple of different forms so far. We can obviously comment on it at this point as well, but we'll have, if there's anything you wanna share, Megan, otherwise, we can open up the public hearing. And we'll definitely ask questions. Megan and Michelle, oh, sorry, I want to back up a little bit. Michelle is available, she's online. So, we have, I'm trying to see if, but she's gonna, I think if we have questions, we're gonna enter them into the chat, I believe, because she, I don't think her audio is on, so.
Before we go, does anyone know the password?
Oh, the Wi-Fi password? I don't know.
My audio is on, but if you, but if you hear me, you will also hear two-year-olds, so.
Okay, that's fine.
She likes them.
She. So, Michelle is, yeah, is available for some questions, but she's with family, so at least we do have her available if we need her. We can ask Megan questions, obviously, and if there's questions for Michelle, we can, I think, write it in the chat, and then, or somehow, whoever's got a computer, not me. Okay, so, right back to the CIP, is there anything you would like to share with us at this time? Megan?
So, as you know, we looked at the CIP at your last meeting, and it has been.
Or you think that?
The first recreation commission. And.
This one is?
Basically, the real change is that it's in a new format.
Yeah.
Because of the zero. And so there's three pages for each project. Your next step is to have a public hearing and then make a recommendation to.
Okay, so, well, at this time, we can actually ask questions for Megan or Michelle in a minute. Let's open up, we don't have an applicant, obviously. So, at this time, we're gonna open up the public hearing for the public, if anybody would like to speak on the 2024-2029 Capital Improvements Plan. Public hearing is open at 7:04. I don't think there's anyone else online, so. It's like just Michelle and one other person. I've seen, open at 7:05, not seeing anybody online or anybody in the audience, we will close the public hearing at 7:05. So, with that, we are in discussion, and we have, obviously, the resolution, the Capital Improvements Plan. We have complete copies of that, as well as the resolutions that are in our packet, and recommended action, page 1314 of our packet as well. So, again, at this time, if somebody wants to make a motion, we can follow up with some discussion as well. I wanna move, okay. Yes, there is.
Number fifteen. And so you would make a motion to approve the resolution of adoption.
Correct. So, you would just, by, by reference, you're gonna include it, so the resolution, you could move the resolution of adoption. That's all this. The 2024 Capital Improvements Plan? The Capital Improvements Plan.
Say that six times fast.
Matt?
So.
Matt?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you guys, I need you all to speak into the microphone. I have no idea who made the motion or what's being said. I do hear you, and I did just hear Jim Cardy.
Oh, okay, thank you. Alright, so, reminder from Michelle, speak loudly into our mics. Thank you, Michelle. Okay.
Sorry, thanks.
Moved Roberts, is there support?
Support.
Okay, support Heatley. Alright, questions on the CIP, discussion? So, any questions? Discussion, yes, sir, Mr. Marsh.
Just a general format thing, which I heard Megan mentioned. Is, there's a reason why these are not all on one sheet, no?
Yes, there is a reason. The city has purchased a Clear Glove software to host the Capital Improvements Plan. That's designed to be viewed online, and it's meant to be a more substantial means of preparing the yearly CIP. But, including projects in the planning commission, the staff had to download each project as PDF, then customize the product worksheet and reassemble it. And so, that's the reason why it's composed of three pages. First page has the project description and details, that's also where the map is of the proposed location. And that will be shown on the online platform. Online, it'll be a map of each project location is included with the project. The second page is the dollar amount attributed to the component, and then the year to which it's assigned. The third page contains funding sources for the project and the dollar amount and the year attributed to that funding source.
But online, it'll all be on one web page, probably.
I believe so, I would defer to Michelle to answer that question.
Yeah, I think we had a similar program at work where, right, the display online, but when you print off individual, it's like.
It is, it is a bit ironic that a thing which is supposed to make it easier has made it.
A little bit longer. There you go. I think in a lot, but it, I think it's easier for staff to update, and I think it is a much better program overall, but yeah, good, good point, especially for me who.
I think the online thing is important, though. I mean, I was, actually, there was another comment, it's like, well, this is all buried in our PDF, but if there's actually a website for each thing, that's. That's good, I think that. I think that, I really like that.
And Michelle commented in the chat that they're continuing to update how they use it, and trying to get it closer to the format that the city's used in the past.
Yeah, and I think overall, yeah, it's a much better tool than previously, so I think we gotta work out some kinks in it, but, great. Any other comments, questions? Yes.
Just a question, if the water treatment. It was in four letters, but anyway, the water treatment plant were to expand, because that was one of the, you know, projects, where would it go?
No. That I don't know. I don't think we know that quite yet, but that's a good question. There's adjacent property, but that's, we don't wanna comment on, right. I don't wanna comment on that right now. But, yeah, good question.
If you watch City Council's meeting from their last, I think it was their last meeting, there was a report presented to them about capacity. And there's some processes that they can expand at the wastewater treatment plant, at the current facility that will allow additional capacities and those kinds of things, but.
While using kind of the same footprint or the same equipment, kind of?
It's adding to the processes they have, and there seems to be area, on the area that was presented, that most could, past those processes could be implemented.
Okay. Wow, there you go. Thank you, thank you. Although, council, you can stand in for the council meeting. Thank you, Tom.
Just watch the meeting.
Yeah. Watch it off. Okay.
Are we commenting on any specific?
You can.
Projects.
Well.
That are on the CIP, or are we talking about in general?
Well, in general, but I mean, we would be approving it, so yeah, I mean, we definitely, if there's a project that's a concern, now would be the time to bring it up, because if it passes, then we would approve it for tonight. I mean, it would, this would be our last chance.
So, I suppose my question is this, and I guess this could go to many examples, but I happen to use the. Restroom, the downtown restrooms item. And the picture, which is shown there, is, seems to be a placeholder of some kind.
What page is that?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
It's four, 4.01, project 4.01.
Well, what?
I took a screenshot.
So, is it just an update? That you're looking for, like, an updated to the picture? I mean, that is probably just a.
Just a question about graphics, but like.
I remember that in the past, we had lots of placeholders for pictures or for maps. I think it's improving now, but it was four point.
Michelle commented in the chat that that picture is a placeholder. And it couldn't necessarily be the design that would be approved at that time, it's just, to give an example of what it possibly could be.
I see, I see what you're saying. Kyle, yeah, it's just an image of a bathroom, that's for lack of anything else. Yeah, it is page 136 of the packet. Oh, yeah, the downtown restrooms, I know that's still an evolving discussion in many ways. Okay, so, just a place, so I mean.
So, I guess the question was, I mean, are you accepting pictures for?
Do you mean what they want to look like? I don't think it matters at this point for this. I mean, if it makes you feel better, they could put an example underneath there maybe, or something, or not actual image, but I don't think anybody's gonna go off the picture of this yet. But, but I understand what you mean, like, we don't wanna portray something that's not necessarily correct, but, because if it is, if that's it, then, then I think, no. Maybe put, put sample or whatever, example picture or something, not actual. Project or whatever, some wording. But, yeah, no, that's a good one, although I don't know how many people would look at the CIP to see that picture, but you never know. We don't wanna mislead anyone. Um, okay, any? Alright, if not, then can we have a roll call, please? This is for the Capital Improvements Plan, approving this, our last chance for the year.
Cardy.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Heatley.
Yes.
Walzki.
Yes. Alright, Capital Improvements Plan is approved. Next up, the amendment to the master plan, future land use map. This amendment would deal with three, the three properties along Baker Road. The next item is just the zoning for the one item, so, again, this one would be for the three properties to amend the master plan for that. I guess, Megan, you wanna give a brief background to this?
Sure, this was prompted by our request from the Dexter Community Schools, Board of Education, for expedited rezoning of the property located at 2505 Baker Road. For public facilities for residential use. In order to facilitate that, that need requires a master plan, joint use change. And this is an issue because DCS wants to sell the property for residential use. Well, there was an update to the city master plan 2019, the future land use classification of all the properties owned by DCS were changed to public facilities at that time, including, including. Including these parcel, including 2505, the two properties adjacent to the north of the subject site, 2521, 2537 Baker Road, were also master planned public facilities. Due to their proximity to other DCS-owned properties. When the zoning ordinance was updated in 2023, all DCS properties were rezoned public facilities, including 2505 Baker. Since it hadn't been used as a single-family residence, since the schools had purchased it in 2013. And then, however, the two properties to the north, 2521, 2537, retained their R1 single zoning designation, because they were and currently are privately owned and single-family residences. This planning commission went through a process to look at these three parcels, and looked at what zoning designations would be best based on the standards that are in the zoning ordinance, and also in the master plan. And it was determined that the best land use, appropriate future land use designation was VR1. Or village residential form-based zoning, because it's compatible with the zoning district to visit a village residential one. And it encourages a variety of housing types, including single-family detached and two-family dwellings, limited uses, and single-family attached and multiple-family dwellings with special name uses. So essentially, it offers more options than the other residential, single-family residential. Categories that are in the future land use now. That, if you have any answer, any questions, also, Michelle's available.
Okay, great. Well, we will go to the public hearing. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing for the amendment to the 2019 master plan. At 7:16. Michelle's the only one online, correct? Yeah.
There's an NR.
Okay. So, we will, 7:17. Alright, we'll close the public hearing at 7:17. So, with that, we do have a sample resolution. On page, it is page 15. No, sorry, that's the Capital Improvements Plan behind it.
There you go. 249.
Yeah, 240, the report begins at 247, and yes, 249 is a copy of the resolution. Again, this could be if somebody puts a motion forward referencing this resolution. This would be, again, for the amendment to the master plan, and we can have some discussion, and again, Michelle's available. You may wanna make a motion?
I don't have to read all there.
I think you can just make a motion to approve the resolution, yeah. Unless you really want to, but.
A motion to approve, to recommend an amendment to the future land use map. In the 2019 master plan for the city of Dexter. As listed in the document here, the five or six whereas. Therefore, let it be resolved that the city of Dexter Planning Commission recommends that City Council approve the amendment to the future land use map in the city of Dexter master plan, designating the properties located at 2505, 2521, and 2537 Baker Road. Properties 080806400, 018, 080806400, 019, and 080806400, respectively. As village residential one, in accordance with PA 33 of 2008, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. In parentheses, the act has amended. Based upon the intent to appropriate use in compatible zoning district identified in the city's 2019 master plan. And number two, previous village, city master plan and zoning efforts, and number three, in an effort to meet the goal. Of encouraging a wide variety of housing types in the city.
Alright, Lu Till, good support?
Support.
Good support, Roberts? Questions? Any questions? Yes, sir.
For Megan.
Alright, Megan, question for you.
So, what is this, so they've gone to the form-based code, that they want to on the sections, so what is, what street type is this, then? Is this a corridor?
It would remain the corridor.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, because it's a central, yes.
So, then that allows, and this would be a site type.
Let me see the. You know, it's like, I don't have all the zoning.
So. Allow.
Yeah, I don't have my zoning ordinance.
Maybe a type A.
I think that's what it is, that's a small.
Yeah, wait, that's okay, the smallest, yeah.
It's a type A, so. And this is a little bit of jumping ahead, but that's okay, because you're gonna.
Yeah, the zoning, yeah.
Res zoning next, but, you know, obviously, they both link. One leads into the other. So, a quarter street, a type A would allow a house and a two-family home as a permitted use. As a permitted building type.
Okay.
If they, if somebody, let's say, took all three, initiated all three parcels, they could probably ask for that to be.
Yeah, amended.
Amended and seen as a site type, and that would allow a single-use institutional house, a two-family. Committed under certain circumstances, and then a townhouse attached for residential, single-use institutional special.
So, similar, okay, so that's a good ques, yeah, so it's the smaller lot, so that's, but they could, I mean, if somebody accumulates all of them, we said, combined, we can revise that.
And it looks like that's consistent with what we've got on the other end.
On the other, yes.
They're across from other.
Yeah, where the other small residential properties are located. Good. And actually, yeah, that'll come up in the next issue too, with the zoning, so, but, good question. Anything else? Everybody clear on what, what this action is, what we're? So, there's. Have a second, so I guess if there's no further discussion, we have a roll call, please.
Heatley.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Over.
No.
Marsh.
Yeah.
Cardy.
Yes.
Walzki.
Yes. Oh. Okay, you're crazy today, tonight. Okay, next up, our third public hearing, which is for the rezoning for 2505 Baker Road. Again, this is just the one property immediately adjacent to the Creekside Drive. And I guess, Megan, you wanna give a little quick background?
Sure, the background on it, in terms of the request, is the same as what I stated for the previous agenda item. Just to note that the VR1 is, the intent of that VR1 zoning district is to maintain a well-established character of scale and density of a traditional pattern of use, as in the original plan. But the building will allowing the adaptive reuse of public and institutional buildings. For uses other than single-family residential. VR1 zoning district allows single-family detached and two-family dwellings as permitted uses, and single-family attached and multiple-family dwellings as special uses. Other types of housing such as accessory dwellings, rental, are permitted uses in the VR1 districts. And vacation rental housing is a, committed as a special name use. In your packet, pages 254 to 255. It goes through the criteria for rezoning request. The only thing in this I wanted to highlight for you. Was that. There is an issue that Michelle has highlighted at the top of page 267. And that is, the standard is, the compatibility of all potential uses in the proposed zoning district with surrounding uses and zoning in terms of land suitability, suitability, impacts on the environment, density, nature of use, traffic impacts, aesthetics, infrastructure, and potential influence and property value. In her review on page 256, she stated that there was. The boundaries of the subject property encroached into a portion of a driveway into the Creekside School property and the Baker Rightway. The Washington County Road Commission obtained that quote-unquote highway easement, when the applicant provided construction of the roundabout at Dan何in Baker Road. Unfortunately, that easement wasn't reported. So, in order to demonstrate the compatibility with all the potential abuses and plan suitability, impacts on environment, density, nature of use, traffic impacts, aesthetics, infrastructure in particular, and potential influence of property values. Documentation must be, one, demonstrate the driveway encroachment has been eliminated, and two, that the highway easement has been reported. And then, she offers, staff offers a number of findings on page 257. In terms of how the application meets that criteria, and there is a motion for the planning commission to either approve or postpone on page 258.
Great, thank you for now. Alright, at this time, we will open up the public hearing at 7:25. If anybody would like to speak to this rezoning request at 2505 Baker Road. Anybody online? 7:26, perfect, so we'll close public hearing, 7:26. With that, we are in discussion, as was mentioned, we have a sample motion. Page 258, the one little caveat to this, besides the zoning analysis that we have, again, is what Megan had mentioned, that the possible, or not possible, but the, the encroachment issue with the easement. But that could be resolved, although, again, if planning commission doesn't feel comfortable with that, that. We could postpone it until that issue was resolved, and come back to us, or we could, as we, as the motion indicates here, the first one, basically, we could approve it, and. Basically, on the condition that that's addressed, those things are addressed. With that, would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just to note, the motion is to recommend to City Council.
I'm sorry?
The motion would be to recommend the rezoning to City Council.
Wait, what did I say? Oh, yeah, okay, thank you, yes, good, that's big difference, yes, thank you. It would be a recommendation, we're not approving the rezoning, of course. Thank you, alright. Any emotion? Page 258, have some discussion.
I'll make that motion. There you go.
Alright, okay, Mr. Hill, could you please?
I'm, my motion will be the top one here, that you're looking at, based on the information provided by the applicant and staff, and following a public hearing, which was conducted by Planning Commission on May 6th, 2024. The Planning Commission finds the rezoning request submitted by Dexter Community, Community School satisfies the criteria for considering an amendment to the. Official zoning map in section 23.03 of the zoning ordinance, and recommends that City Council approve the property located. Be resumed from PF public facilities to VR1 residential zoning, based on the findings cited here, and further subject to the following condition. And I'm gonna read that condition, "In order to demonstrate compatibility of all the potential uses allowed in the B1 zoning district with surrounding uses and zoning in terms of land suitability, impacts on environment, density, nature of use, traffic impacts, aesthetics, and infrastructure, and potential influence on property values." The applicant must provide documentation verifying the driveway encroachment has been eliminated and the highway easement has been recorded."
Okay, move till, so support.
Support.
Support Roberts, okay, renowned discussion. Yes.
So, based on the last public hearing in action, the zoning map is now amended, correct?
The future land.
The future.
Future land map, not this.
Sorry, not the zoning, right.
The future land use map has been recommended for approval to, to the City Council.
City Council.
So, it hasn't officially changed yet.
Alright, thank you.
That's it? Okay, um, any other questions or comments on this? Kyle had mentioned that during the last hearing, basically, the, about the form base and what type it would be, so, again, again, it was the type A, so. We jumped ahead of ourselves a little bit in that, but that is good to know. And it just, it's just the one parcel at this time? Any other?
A little confused by the driveway encroachment, is that? Easement that the. That somebody has in the school or department.
Was the county that.
Or county that.
Was it?
Yeah, Michelle's.
Oh, okay, yes, good.
Okay, so, the, you can see that the, both from the aerial photo, and from the excerpt from the engineered plan. Both from the aerial photo and from the excerpt from the engineered plans for the roundabout. That the road right-of-way um, goes on to the property, so it's not square like that. That's why the, the county GIS hasn't been updated, because the easement that was given to the road commission. For some reason, hasn't been recorded, um, so we're working with both the schools and the road commission to clear that up. And then you can see the other portion that's on the driveway coming into the school site. The schools didn't. Uh, create an easement when this was done, because at that time, they weren't thinking of selling the property. And needing it to be rezoned, so they are aware that that needs to be taken care of. And that's why that condition is in the, um, in your motion.
Yeah, I was showing also the visual on the map here, so.
Yeah.
Is, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Hey.
Well, so would that, if that were recorded, would that satisfy condition number one?
Yes, uh, wait. What said, um?
You'd need, they need to do both things, Karen, they need to record the highway easement. And they need to provide evidence that they've cleared up the encroachment into the school's driveway. So whether they do that through an easement, that gets recorded, that, and it's something that would be presented to us for review and approval. Or they do a boundary adjustment, so that the property boundaries are clearly reflected properly on the GIS map.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
They're kind of, because they're both related to drive or like access kind of thing, so, but they are two separate complete items. And this would be done, Michelle, before goes to city council? Would this be clarified? It would have to be, I would assume.
Um, no, because council could do the same condition of approval that you do. It only becomes approved if they provide that information.
Okay, well, okay, so, yes, sir.
Michelle, can you verify this, these maps show subject taints and subject fields? But it also shows to connect to existing sanitary, can you confirm that that's happened and that we aren't annexing a subject's field and subject take?
That's a good question, Tom, I would have to double-check that, um.
And I, I said annexing, but I meant rezoning.
Yeah, I know what you meant.
No, I understand what you meant.
That's a good.
Um, I know that they're connected to one, because I remember Brenda saying something about it. Um, what I would suggest is to address your concern, which is valid, would be to amend the motion. To make um, connection to all public utilities a condition of approval.
Oh, good, did, did you, um, so would you support that as a motion maker?
Oh, wait.
Sorry?
Yes.
Yes, okay, uh. Roberts, you support it, correct, second, what is that? Okay, um, so that's basically, again, adding the condition that they have to go up to the city utilities, which they may already be, but it, it was a good question, so. Right, any other?
And, and, one more thing, and it's not within our purview to add other conditions, or could we, with regard to driveways?
We could, you could, if you, if you so felt that it was necessary to meet the, to meet the criteria for granting the rezoning.
So if this were redeveloped. Uh, I think I mentioned this when we considered some, uh, considered this previous when they first came to us. If they redevelop the site, could we make a recommendation that the driveway have to connect via easement? To the access drive that they have, meaning, instead of having the driveway continue to connect with the roundabout, move. To the schools.
I don't know that we can do that in a rezoning, Michelle, um.
Yeah, that's a good, go ahead, Matt, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
Well, it doesn't really pertain directly to the zoning, I mean, I would agree one hundred percent with you. That way, if it came, came in that way, but I'm not sure we can do as a condition of the zone.
I don't think that we as a body can recommend conditions like that.
They have to, a, a applicant has to offer any conditions to the zoning, so.
So we can't make a, make one that isn't offered, correct?
No, this isn't a, so, first of all.
It's not a condition.
It's not a conditional, you, you can place conditions, but as Michelle said, they need to relate to the standards. So that standard would possibly relate to infrastructure, um, and health and safety based on that. Um, my hesitation on that is that. Um, feel like a condition of that, like that could get lost over time.
That's what I was just thinking.
So, what might be better is to say that. Um, the, for them to eliminate that curb cut. And then the driveway can come to eliminate the driveway as they have it, and then for that driveway to come in when it's redeveloped.
Wouldn't that, if they redeveloped it, they need a special land use permit?
No, you can have a house, so if somebody can reoccupy the house, then they would have to get a new driveway. Um, and it's a question about whether they could get a driveway onto Baker as well, so I, I feel like, you know, there's just a lot of.
Is that what you was?
Placing that condition is problematic in terms of implementing it.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree, Megan, I think that there's. I like, oh, thank you, yes, Michelle?
Okay, I, I would like to make sure I'm understanding the question about redevelop. Excuse me, are you talking about? It, instead of it just being a single-family home, it's removed and something else is developed on the property? Or, uh, help me visualize what it is that you're, you're, you mean by redeveloped?
So if the house that's there today remains to be there today, they sell it and somebody occupies it, no big deal. But they sell it, somebody buys it, wants to turn it into a two-family unit, uh, duplex kind of situation. I don't want to have to add another driveway to Baker Road cul-de-sac in that short frontage. I'd like any redevelopment and additional units or units, if they combine it, to have to access. Appropriately, further to the north or on the school. For lack of a better term, driveway that goes to the west.
I understand what you're saying, so let me, I can help alleviate your fears, um, the road commission did not. The road commission would not allow a second driveway onto that area of the roundabout, so.
Yeah.
Alright.
So, um. We wouldn't have to worry about a second driveway.
Girls.
That, um. If it were redeveloped for a two or a three family, I, I hope that makes sense, uh, Tom. Okay.
So, along that full front, along that is going to be road commission jurisdiction for driveway permits.
Correct, on that section, uh, for that property, because of its proximity to the roundabout.
Alright.
Even though that property is in the city, that roundabout is, um, the road commissions.
That answers my question, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and I think overall, if they, if they accumulate parcels, um, like numerous of the ones to the north of, but I, right, I would. I don't think the county would let them get a curb cut, another one that close to that roundabout anyway, so that would eliminate, but I, I agree, I think so. Hopefully, that kind of addresses your question, because that was a good. Yeah, good.
But I think it's a good conversation for the schools to know or have.
To know what we're thinking.
Maybe if this property gets redeveloped in the future, consider that you might want to be granting an easement for access.
Yeah, the school might not care if they're going to sell it, but. But yes, good, good.
But the people buying it may say, hey, this is.
And this is our, I mean, I think we generally seem to support the idea of having access off of there, so yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Know that, and understand that might be very hopeful.
Okay, yes, and I think Michelle has her hand up again?
So the schools will more than likely do the land boundary or the boundary adjustment.
I'm sorry, I missed.
Um, they have already said that they're not comfortable doing an easement that would allow a driveway off a row, off a. Uh, driveway going into the school property, it's a security thing for them.
Yeah, it's a private.
Uh-huh, I know what you're thinking already.
So follow-up question, where it's, on this graphic where it says existing right-of-way and it goes on to the school property, that is not existing right-of-way.
Where, which?
It's their, their property line.
Well, what, what do you?
So in the graphic, we have it depicts the, uh, yellow right-of-way for Baker Road, like a T.
Yep.
And the south or the bottom of the page, portion of that T, is actually school property and not right-of-way line.
Right, the yellow is the planned right-of-way, the blue became the new right-of-way, there is an easement for it. They, the, that, that much property was given back. Go to Papa, please.
The, the area in the triangle, blue to yellow, is what they want the easement on. I'm saying yellow to yellow, as it's depicted here, appears to be existing right-of-way, that's not, that's school property.
Okay.
So. I think what you're saying is for them to have a driveway, they'd have to have an easement from the cul-de-sac down and access that.
Yeah.
So.
Which it appears would not want to grant. We said D to E F G, I'll beat you. I mean, it's interesting, but, so, okay.
It sounds like they're going to struggle with, with access to that unless.
Yeah, that's.
Redevelopment, so that's.
That's a great point, because for redevelop, I mean, by itself, although it's by itself, it's a relatively small parcel, so I think if it's going to go forward, it'd probably be accumulated with others.
But it have to.
It have to be, right, because you're right, they're not going to get access, so.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, good, yeah, good discussion, and yeah, hopefully the schools heads up on that.
The point, one of the points is the yellow to the, uh, west, the yellow lines is not right-of-way, it's city property.
School property.
School property. The drawing is slightly inaccurate, never, I mean, not so, it's inaccurate, never.
Any other questions, so does that resolve your concerns, Tom?
That answered my.
I mean, it answers your questions, you're right, you still have a concern, but it answers the question, right? I don't think we can resolve the concern fully. Alright, seeing no other questions. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Artie?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Bill?
Was there an additional? Condition, other than the two listed here that we?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
What was that additional condition?
They need to hook up to public utilities.
Okay.
Yes, yes, so that's been added, okay, thank you for the reminder, and, and your vote was yes?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Pete Lee?
Yes.
Cooper?
No.
Walzki?
Yes. Uh, that, I'll move forward to council, with the next item, um, the Kentwood Place Plenary PUD. That is going to be postponed until next month, so, um, give the applicant some time to address staff concerns. So we will move. Right on to pre-ran citizen participation, you not having tonight, reports of officers. And no other, no report from me, anything else from planning commissioners? Anything, um, I don't know, while his absence tonight, committee reports, uh, probably not. Committee reports, uh, the ZDA's meeting, what, and that's later this month, I think. Um. Alright, so with that, I guess citizens wishing to address the commission. Seeing none, and I'm assuming no hands online, alright, so old business, none, new business. Discussion of a potential text amendment to the zoning ordinance, so this kind of pertains really to the issue that. Um, we kind of had last month, uh, which was regarding the senior center and the, uh. Design standards, I guess, for lack of a better word, but, um, so, yes, Megan, do you want to give us a little?
Sure, Michelle placed in your packet, and it's pages two sixty-five to two sixty-six, a memo, um, describing. Um, the intent of the Baker Road corridor mixed uses of nation, and she lists the twelve items that are listed in master plan. Um, about what the court, what the quarter is, is planned for. Um, and particularly that it's a walkable corridor, and that was tried. And that was implemented in zoning ordinance language with the Baker Road corridor form-based code, and that created and updated in twenty twenty-three. Um, and again, the intent of that is to, um. Have regulate urban form and also in addition to use and intensity of use. Um, with a mix of uses, public space, in order to provide development in a sustainable way while preserving this work for the city. Um. But, and there were a number of design regulations, there were standards and there were guidelines. There are standards and there are guidelines in zoning ordinance, particularly to Baker Road and also to all the form-based districts. Um, during the site plan review process, where the Dexter Senior Center, twenty-seven forty, road staff, planning permission to the council. Discovered that the Baker Road order form-based code regulations align with schools established. But the application of those regulations had some challenges, um, for example, building placement orientation standards in section eleven. Point eleven D to be one through four requires that the primary building entrances, front and public roads. Sidewalks must be provided along the full length of the front building, of the front of the building and public entrance. And building entries must be located so they're easily identifiable, convenient access in each project. Maintain a well-defined entry sequence for pedestrian and vehicular uses from the road to the building. And that all additional public entrances, regardless of location, must provide direct pedestrian access of the same quality and design that's required for the maintenance. Um, for those of you who, um, were here for that item at the last planning commission meeting, you'll know that that. Development did not meet a number of those, um, and unlike the. Requirements for, um, bulk and setbacks. The zoning ordinance currently doesn't offer any ability of the planning commission nor the city council to waive those standards. Um, so it was requested that the planning commission discuss those master plan goals and the regulations established in zoning ordinance. Um, and determine what, if any, changes should be made.
Right, yeah, thank you, so again, it's not necessarily in, uh, uh, where we don't have any motion tonight. It, it's really just a discussion item and probably going to give staff some direction on general thoughts regarding that, or if we need more information. You know, there's. Yeah, I, I. I think, I mean, for my part, I, I, I don't think, I mean, for those that were with us last, last month. Um, I think, like, I did vote against the senior plan, I think, um, I think the standards are. For the most part, pretty good, I think that, I mean, maybe there could be room for release valve, but even that, I caution, as far as like the waivers. Um, I look at, at the other buildings that we planned along the Baker Road corridor, kind of fit, for the most part, into this design standard. And I think what's also important to look at is what's, what's the remaining property along Baker Road, there's this, other than the senior center. Which, again, I personally feel was a tremendously lost opportunity, as far as orienting that building only to the parking lot. Um, these standards were written to prevent that, so. But that's my personal opinion on that, so, but if you look at the other parcels. And I, I can kind of see the application on that one a little bit, it's part of a larger complex, but still, even at that, I think if you look at the application further down Baker Road. All the other properties that we're going to see, there, most of them are, there's smaller lots, or if they're combined, they're all going towards the core of the town. They're all going like downtown, we're not going to be reaching out on Baker Road to like larger, large parcels that. This wouldn't be possible for, I mean, the rest of Baker Road from this site there is extremely walkable, well. It should be, it could be with better sidewalks and better frontage, so I think, looking at the design pattern of what we want the rest of it to do. You, you even look at Brower's Building, look at the farm, the old pharmacy building, but Brower's Building doesn't strictly comply, because it's kind of at the side. It does have a prominent front, the sidewalk is right there, so I think, how do we want the rest of Baker Road to develop? I, I don't necessarily see a reason for the change, just because the last applicant couldn't, or didn't want to make it work. But that's just my opinion, so, I mean, again, there is an opportunity to maybe keep stuff, and then we could add a, the waiver requirement like we have for other. Um, aspects of the code, but. aspects of the code, but, and, and any other thoughts, or again, we don't necessarily have an action, but, yes.
I had very similar thoughts to yours, in that the zone is pretty well-written, I think, and yeah, one project had trouble fitting it, but those are, those are good guidelines. Those are solid recommendations and requirements, so I don't really. I don't think that they really.
And I mean, I think that project could have mattered.
And we can always look at Baker Road and make it better in all of our zones, right, overlays? But. You know, Jackson Road.
Right, true, we wanted to.
There's already Jackson Road.
And other thoughts, so again, I mean, we can make, I mean, we can ask for additional information, we can.
I think it's good to have these discussions when an applicant struggles with what we have.
Yeah, which is exactly why it's on the agenda, so, absolutely.
I'm exactly on the same page to do it, I don't think. I think it's good, I think it's, I think, I think a lot of thought went into it, and I think it's what we want, and I don't think that we should move away from what we want, just because one applicant doesn't find it to their liking.
I totally agree. I think what happened here is their architect grew up, wasn't aware of that requirement, and so it's going to cost them money, and they're, and they don't want to spend money, but it's not, not an issue for us, it's them to resolve in, in-house to make it work. I do think the Brower Building, by the way, is a good example. The door isn't exactly facing the street, but it's right there, you go right past it, you don't, there's no confusion as to where the entrance is, and there would be, if they let this building, like it is, so.
And again, the key is to make it friendly for the pedestrians and more accessible, yes.
Well, I, I agree, but, um, because of the nature of the use, I think they're going to want a lot of room to, for vehicles to pull up, you know, it's, it's a bunch of old people trying to get in and out. And I don't, I don't think. Pointually, for the senior center, I think having a street-facing door is a problem.
But we didn't tell them to put senior center there, like, I mean, you could use that sort of logic to evade our planning rules on any site, well, but my use doesn't fit your rules.
Yeah, I think, so, and then again, what I think we're looking at is an overall, and not necessarily as it pertains to the senior center, although that's what triggered this discussion, but yes.
I don't think we need to change what we have, I agree with what everybody said as far as a pedestrian perspective. That site is certainly unique in that it was approved with units, as I understand, not parcels, the detention was built that had, you know, served the whole site, it was built in the spot, we probably wouldn't pick today if we were going to do the form-based code. But maybe, and then we did give them the option to conform, to put the door up there for pedestrian access. It is elevationally challenged, I do agree that it would be difficult to get pedestrians direct access, but they, they could get them around and into the front door, and maybe if there were parking along Baker to allow for that interface with people that are driving here, as opposed to the, you know, have the automobile focused around the whole building instead of just the backside, because we know a lot of residents will be coming via automobile, right? Because they have limited mobility or, or needs to access the site. So I felt like that was kind of a special circumstance, given a number of the things I've mentioned about existing condition and so on, and, and we did give them a choice to add the door or not. And it sounds like they have added the door.
And the plans that I have got, that were submitted after city council's approval to immigrant compliance conditions, there is a door in the center of the, the side that is facing Baker. There is a staircase.
I actually think that the old pharmacy building is a good example of how you can comply with our planning rules, but still have a somewhat auto-centric site.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's a good example. I think, I did think about the elevation change as well on that site, but the only thing with that elevation that changes, that's, that's artificial, I mean, all that dirt was just piled there when they upgraded the wellness center. So it's not like, it, it could have easily been flattened.
Well, they've got the detention.
Yeah, but anyway, I don't want to focus on that one, but, but I saw, but anyway, but to the point of the elevation, I thought, that's not as much of an issue going further down Baker Road as well, so.
And the pharmacy building's a little elevated.
Yeah, no, it is, so that's true, but it was kind of in the site, it used to be pretty flat, actually, I think it was a little lower than the Baker Road.
Jim, you're, you're talking about how they have the parking in the corner.
On the side, yeah, and then the entrance was both the front parking lot and a front door.
Well, at the same time, there's a sidewalk, you know, right up from the sidewalk, and so it's both easily, I think, accessible if you park your car, but it's also easily acceptable if you're walking the street or biking up. And, and on the whole, the building's a street, a street, like, oriented building, I would say.
Yeah, that's a good example, yes, Megan?
Mr. Cherry, I just want to show what Michelle put in the chat.
Oh, please.
That, yes, the plans do show a door, however, they have applied for variance in the ZDA in terms of the door regulation.
Okay. Alright, well, I, I don't, I mean, again, I don't want to get too much into details on that, since that's not really what our discussion is, but, um.
Generally hearing from the planning commission.
Yeah, I don't, I think it's good, I'm generally hearing, yes, that, no changes.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you all. That is, okay, well, that was the new business, proposed business for June.
Yeah?
Yes.
Do you want to go further in potentially amending the ordinance or no?
I don't know, I, I didn't hear any interest.
Or is this something that you still want to discuss further?
There's no interest, Michelle, in any of us of changing the ordinance.
That's fine, that's all I needed to know, I wanted to make sure I wasn't.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for calling.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, it's Jim, leans forward into the mic, let me get more parents. Okay, so proposed business for June 3rd, I know it's, we'll have the postponed, I'm forgetting the name of the PUD, the Kentwood, yes. And that might be it for that agenda? Okay. Well, that's planning, site plan, okay. With that, citizens wishing to address the commission, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Moot Hills, did you support that? Okay, support Roberts, pay for adjournment, say hi. Hi. Alright, meeting is adjourned.
And we wanted to stay longer.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you, Michelle, enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.
Your little babies. Yeah, it's been a good day, we can cruise through that agenda, yeah, a little bit of outside time.